Okay, we're going to show in the live video, in the live audio, five, four, three.
We'll be back in session. We ended number four, new business. We're going on to number five, which will be the professional services bond for fire EMS. Each one of you should have a blank resolution that we added a specific item per the insurance company to, and that'll be the last sentence of number one. They added, they ask that the phrase specifically, a general indemnity agreement be added.
That's season one plus.
If you don't have them, then you will be getting them. I apologize. I think you had the one without the.
Oh, I didn't.
General indemnity agreement.
This is the bad one.
Yeah. Go to the bad in the way and take the new one.
Move to discuss.
Second.
Floor is open. Yes, sir.
Move that we sign a resolution number for discussion only.
Second.
And read for discussion only.
Second.
Please, second. Floor is open. Yes, ma'am.
Just an observation. Resolution authorizing the mayor to obtain and execute should be per performance bond?
Isn't it, isn't the corrected version?
Correct. Yes, that is a correction. All right, excellent. My second question, number two, that the cost of the bond is hereby made and authorizing, oh, we did read it. Excuse me, I jumped ahead, excuse me.
Yeah, we discussed all this stuff. Okay. Yeah, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
The resolution number will be six oh five. Resolution authorizing the mayor to obtain and execute performance bond between the city of Eureka Springs and the Western Carroll County Ambulance District, whereas the City Council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, is aware of the current contract between the city and the Western Carroll County Ambulance District and the city's need to obtain and maintain, in effect, a performance bond. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that, one, the mayor of the city of Eureka Springs is hereby authorized to obtain and execute all documents necessary to satisfy all terms of the contract with regard to the requirements for a performance bond, specifically a general indemnity agreement in the amount of $150,000. Two, that the cost of the bond is hereby made an authorized expenditure of the 2012 budget for the city of Eureka Springs.
Mr. Pennard. One thing that I would like to see different is I'd like to know what authorized expenditure line that's going to come from.
Professional Services Fire Department. Ms. Pennard.
I'd like to know the amount of this bond, please.
The amount of this bond is $150,000. It costs, the insurance stated that it will cost 6,000 per year.
6,000 per year.
We have to do it per year according to them, according to the insurance company. We're out of it for any more than a year at a time.
Thank you.
This is part of the agreement with the Western Carroll County Ambulance District.
And why didn't we take care of this before we got into the contract?
Because it was an issue then. We've never had to put up a performance bond before this year. So it became an issue this year, according to the endless. So that's all I can say. They didn't expand on it. Yes, ma'am.
Would somebody explain to the public what a performance bond is and why we need to do this?
A performance bond is a, is a actual guarantee through the insurance company that the contractor and contractee, we being the contractee, will perform what is specifically stated in the, in the agreement with the Western Carroll County Ambulance District. If they deem that it is not up to performance, then they can pull the bond and then the endless, the insurance company will have to pay the performance bond. I don't see that as a problem, but that, that is basically the issue. Yes, sir.
Performance bonds are an up and coming thing more, more than they ever have before. But I'm a little concerned about clarification strictly for when the 6,000 starts and seeing it in the resolution that it is coming from the fire and EMS.
Okay, it says authorized expenditure of 2,000 budget for the city of.
Either that or we're going to have to address it in a, the budget resolution insurance to cover that particular expense. And when does it start?
It will start as soon as we submit this paperwork. Yes, ma'am.
Is this an official allocation of funds for that line?
The funds are in the.
Or the.
The funds are in the fire departments.
They're already in that line?
Yes, ma'am, I believe so. I think he's got.
There's sufficient funds to cover that.
Sufficient funds. Mr. Weaver put this together for us, so, and he looked at the, the contract with the insurance company. Yes, ma'am.
Would you say again which budget line this is going to be taken out of?
Professional Services Fire Department. According to Chief Williams, as of the back, six hours ago. Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to know if my colleague would like to make a motion as to the changes he suggested a moment ago.
Okay. Mr. Pennard.
Can I?
I think she was.
Can I answer? I'm, I'm, I don't know. I'm, I'm going to ask a question. Is, are we going to address this in a budget resolution? Because the resolution that says that we're going to have the bond is all, I believe is all we're executing tonight, correct?
Yes, sir.
So we're, with this, we aren't right now committing any funds.
The fire department's committing the funds out of their 2012 budget.
So there's no required budget adjustment under professional services for 2012?
Not according to Chief Williams.
No, I don't care to change anything.
Okay. Anybody else? Ms. Pennard.
I would move to add verbiage to section two that specifies exactly where these funds are coming from, to wit, professional services fire department in the amount of, well, professional services fire department would probably cut it. So I would move to add that this specifically comes from the professional services fire department.
Second.
Please, second. Any further discussion on it? Mr. Pennard.
I move that we approve resolution six oh five as amended.
No, we've.
Give her this motion first. No discussion? All right. Is this a real call? Do we need a real call?
I don't think it's required, but it wouldn't be.
Let's go ahead and do a real call on it. So we'll just be different on this two. Be different.
Amending it.
I want to hear the motion.
You want to read, you want the motion restated?
Please.
So, okay, for the record.
Ms. Pennard suggested adding in section two that it would come from the professional services fire department budget.
She said suggested. Got a clear on that?
Portion of the budget.
Actually, made the motion that it comes from.
The suggestion was made, I think was.
There's a difference between suggestion and a motion.
My apology. Made the motion.
Okay.
Ms. Lindblad.
Yes.
Ms. Pennard.
Yes.
Mr. Raphael.
Yes.
Mr. DeVito.
Yes.
Mr. Berry.
Yes.
Mr. Pennard.
Yes.
Six oh.
Thank you. Okay. Move on to number six.
You need to approve it as amended.
So.
Need a motion? Yes, sir.
Would you be so kind as to actually change number two, so we all know exactly what it will say?
be that the cost of the bond herein made an authorized expenditure of the 2012 budget for the city of Eureka Springs from the fire department professional services line item.
Any questions? Mr. Pennard.
Move that we approve resolution six oh five as amended.
Second.
Please, second. Further discussion on it?
Thank you.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eleven carried six zero zero. Thank you. Number six is under new business assigned ordinance. Motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second. Floor is open. Everybody should have a copy of the signed ordinance, like ordinance.
I don't. Is this, Mr. Pennard, is this the one that you worked on? Is that the signed ordinance?
As of September the fifth, yes.
I might never have received the copy yet. Is there a date?
Is, is this different from what has been being reviewed by Glenna and Bobby?
I don't, I don't understand. It's already been reviewed by the planning commission. It's been reviewed by, it's the ordinance party, been reviewed by the city attorney. Everybody should have gotten chapter seven point five two with an as of date of five September at the top.
I never got one.
Can I look at this, please?
Okay. I thought everybody had a copy of it.
I think we sent this a while back.
Um. I don't, I'm, I'm trying to be as courteous as possible in saying this, but we, Bobby and Glenna and I observed changes. It really is more than renumbering. And I really would be grateful if you would come and go over it with us so we can clarify the suggestions that were made and why before it comes to the table.
Mr. Pennard.
I don't have a copy. Mr. Parker doesn't have a copy. I would move to postpone this.
I think these were sent out as an email, is my understanding.
I'll let me where I had to download it. I apologize.
Mr. Pennard.
I'm not going to even try to go through the number of hours and time that was spent by myself, Mr. Leswig, the whole planning commission. It is apparent, and I'm going to be, try to be as nice about my comments as other people have tried to be. When I get a copy back from something that is, has been drafted for review by this table, that has already been reviewed by the appropriate commission, you know, does that, does that mean I need to wait until Parks weighs in on this? Do I need to wait until the building manager weighs in on this? Because there is some very pointed comments, and I don't want to sound like I'm taking offense, but it's, it's just, somebody spent a lot of time wasting their time and possibly mine on these tables. And I will read from the copy that I got. And a lot of people don't have color printers, so whenever I printed this out, I had to go back to every line and look and see what was red, what was yellow, what was black, what was bold. And there's a comment made, and I'll just read it for those of you who didn't get even the original that I sent out. Original text is, is black. Text deleted by Ken has strike through line. Ken's new text is bold italic. Changes which are read but conflict with original code, code are in bold italic caps. Now somewhere along the line, somebody's going to have to decipher that, and I'm not asking for a legal opinion. But in reviewing it, the draft where all the line outs are, it is very obvious that this is exactly why we have a problem with our sign ordinance, because everything that was shown as a, that I deleted was put in by ordinance 2027 by previous council, Clearback, I believe was November of '06, that was never codified, but was passed and signed and went into effect, and therefore, is this, is this yours? Those, those corrections and comments are, are immaterial. As I stated whenever we first addressed this after Mr. Weaver reviewed the ordinance itself, is that there have been no changes made to the body and intent of the ordinance. There may be a mistake, God forbid, in a paragraph number that should have read point oh six instead of point oh eight, because by the time this got reviewed by several times, and it's, it's gotten to the point now that there, there's probably one major thing that came out of it where there was an appendix that was made part of the body of the ordinance, because that was the way it was passed. And then there was also a, an appendix that was passed that addressed different permitted signs. So if anybody has any better ideas how to do this, I'm open to it. If not, I move that we assign a number to it, put it on its first reading.
Yes, ma'am.
There's a motion on the floor.
Second.
Second.
Well, okay.
Please, second. Any further discussion on it? Mr. Berry.
Yeah, evidently what I got and printed out, I printed out an ordinance number. I guess I got this from the clerk. And I got a, as of September 5, 2012, chapter seven point five two signing.
And the appendices.
No appendices. Nothing was, nothing is marked out. Nothing was in red. For example, there was, wow, it doesn't matter. On page three, seven five two oh six, exemptions is not, you know, it's not on my, on my copy. Now, granted, I don't print it out in color, but I don't even remember seeing it in color when I printed it. And it certainly isn't, nothing is marked through on my copy. So I don't know what, what we're even doing.
The one, the one you have is the one that I provided to the city clerk. The only one that's in red is the one that was taken on by a building official and Ms. Booth to review.
And are they the ones who, who marked items through, items out? I'm much better to work off of that than this one. I'm sorry.
In an effort to clarify and further muddy the waters, you are looking at one, a short ordinance that was passed, or that was drafted, I think by Mr. Pennard and those that were helping him with several attachments. And you're looking at a much longer document also that the clerk has distributed. It has now been, changes made to it based on recommendations by Ms. Booth and our building official. And what you're looking at is, Mr. Pennard, I think has proposed to you simply changing the codification numbers on several paragraphs. And I reviewed that document as you requested last time. And I think that that stands in and of itself in good order for passage. But I also think that the underlying sign ordinance needs a lot of work in certain areas. And I don't think that's what Mr. Pennard is necessarily directly addressing in what he brought to you. He's trying to get the numbers in shape. The effort that the building official and Ms. Booth is trying to do is to make substantive, more substantive changes to what the law is than simply recodifying it to make it easier to research and easier to understand. So you've got, you've got two different objectives. And, and at some point, I think as I sent to Mr. Pennard in my reviewing it, there are things that do need to be changed in the sign ordinance, but that's not what his document would do. His document would recodify it in a more organized manner. And I have to agree that it's a mess right now as it stands.
There's, there's only one, the part, and after you've printed so many pages and they're laying there on the floor, and you're trying to figure out which one was the most current one, appendix B is probably the most messed up appendices right now, because as it was passed, I will, just so everyone knows, I believe the ordinance was, I want to say November 6, 2006, or something like that. There are even some changes that were made to the code, even though 2027 was not incorporated in the city code that changed 2027 with ordinance 2037. So by the time that was all said and done, if you look at, and I'll, I'll just give you a quick cursory, one that, for example, if, if anybody that has it on page two, paragraph B, it says legal signs, and it says until the permit required pursuant to the provisions of seven point five two oh six has been issued, that very well could be what the building official and Ms. Booth identified as point oh eight. They're saying that I took out ordinance number 1399 on down the page. If you look at appendix B, which is right after seven point five two oh six, it says exemption from permit requirement. And this is the note added by the editor of this appendice. These are already listed in appendix B. I would suggest the first paragraph be revised to reflect the added appendix and this section deleted. That's all well and good, but however, if you look at the appendix B that was passed by the council, it would totally delete half of the, actually, it would allow the ones that are in appendix B, but would disallow the ones that are marked out in the appendix B. That, those are the first indication that I got that they were following the pre-2027 ordinance, reviewing it. And when Mr. Leswig and I took it, we, we started with ordinance 1399, which basically was one of our first ordinances. Then the number was changed to section 86 of the code because the codifier felt like that was within their purview. Then it was changed to seven point eight four after review by the planning commission, seven point two eight. Now it's at seven point five two. My, my only recommendation with the change, a minor tweak to appendix B, is the ordinance has met the review of the city attorney, which is the way municipal league recommend that we not have to sit here and read 511 pages of documents, that if we have any other things that have been either neglected, left out, misnumbered, or whatever, and I don't want to say this the wrong way, but it'd be a lot easier to change now than it is trying to change it now, if that makes sense.
No, it doesn't.
If this ordinance gets passed, the way the schedules are written with the adjustments to appendix B, and if somebody wants to go through and spend their time reviewing and rereviewing against seven different past sign ordinances, 2027, passed by council in November of 2006, basically rewrote the sign ordinance for the city of Eureka Springs. It was never codified. The reviews made by the building official, Ms. Booth, were made with the code that's on the, on the webpage that does not include 2027 changes, but does include 2037 changes. And then I think there was one other, 2100 was a change that was made by the previous council back in 2009, when it talked about the, had to do with R1, R2, C1. And there was another one that talked about lighting. And I think most of that was in 2037, lighting and flags.
I have no doubt that this was a grueling process. And I don't want to discount all of the effort that you and Mr. Leswig put into this. I have seen at times in the past that with really good intentions, things have been passed that aren't practical with reality. They don't fit the reality. And if these changes are, if you would, if you would allow us to sit down with you so you could explain exactly what you just did, and then we could say why we think certain things need to change. Example, 40-foot banner, they're the.
If that's not in the ordinance now, we aren't trying to change anything. That's my point. If it was in there and it was changed, then yes, make that recommendation on a, on a paragraph that, you know, it's in the, the code as 60 foot should be 20. But if it's in the code as 60 foot and you want it to be 40, we aren't trying to change it to 40, even though it makes sense. Do that later. If, if it's changes that were administratively errors that were made, okay, then I'll suck it up and we'll, we'll change them. But those changes that, those that deal with it, i.e. the building official or police department or whoever's enforcing it, says, well, this, this isn't right. It should be 180 days instead of 30 days. Or it should be 60 feet instead of 40 feet. Write it down and keep it for later and propose changes to the sign ordinance, just like the one from planning commission that I've got in the back of my book now, non-conforming signs. We're not trying to slip any changes into the ordinance. It's cleaning it up administratively. There was some of the paragraphs that were so muddled between chapter 86 and chapter 128 and chapter 150, whatever it was, that yes, there had to be a little bit of literary license. And if somebody wants to rework some of that, I'd be more than glad to sit down with them. But this is the product of, planning commission has reviewed this and those mentioned before.
Ms. Lindblad.
So my understanding is that since this was never codified, that what this is is it's kind of making a, an ordinance right now that is a clarified ordinance that can be built on later. that is a clarifying ordinance that can be built on later, but that there's such a mismatch that it's, it's unwieldy at the moment. Is that what, is that what you're saying?
That's exactly what I've been trying to say.
So that you're giving us a framework that can be, can, because all this stuff will be put together and it'll be more clarified, then in the future, council can make changes to the ordinance and it'll be, sounds like more intelligent changes since everything will be, everything we've got going right now is incorporated. And I think actually it's a pretty good idea. Because we go back and change ordinances all the time, so I don't see why we couldn't go ahead and, um, approve this one as a starting point. And then if we want to go back and make changes, then we can, especially since this one's never been codified and it needs to be codified.
It, it has been passed. And just to give you an example, if you were able to put the line-through copy and the copy that was, my last copy is of September the 5th. If you look at Appendix A, I think there was maybe two typos. The rest, if you bounce it against what the code says versus what the line-through edition from their review says, is going back to the old code that's in the code book that did not get changed under 2027, which was a total, I'm sorry, it was a total waste of their time.
Anybody else? Okay. Should we have a motion on the floor?
To postpone.
To postpone? That's the only motion that's before the table right now. Was there a second?
Yes.
We're good with that motion? Read the motion, please.
To postpone.
Until?
Mr. DeVito, help along.
Uh, well, let's start with the next meeting.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no.
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 Okay, we didn't-
I've got an aye here.
Okay, let's, let's try this again.
Okay.
All in favor of postponing until the next meeting, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
No.
Abstain.
Three, two, one.
You may vote to postpone or if you did not vote, the motion fails.
Guess this one makes the big bucks, huh?
Mm-hmm.
Three, four, two, one. Let's postpone and get, make a little more clarification. Okay. Number seven, reconsideration of the deer hunt.
Move to discuss.
Second.
Floor is open.
First of all, we've gone through numerous renditions and interpretations of words. Uh, I know there are some people who have called, emailed, expressed their yays and nays, and probably the same ones are the ones that voted the way they voted. So it gets down to an arbitrary and capricious decision on this table's part when it comes to saying, did we have a valid vote? Yes, we had a vote. The citizenry said that they wanted a deer hunt. Yes, there is a lot of problems with it. Uh, however, in listening to the concerns of the citizenry, whether it be yea or nay, uh, the recommendations, the legal opinion that two meetings ago, I believe, that this table passed and approved the deer hunt as recommended. Is that not correct, Mr. Weaver?
Three meetings ago, I believe.
Three meetings ago. I move that this item be taken from the table and turned over to the administrative, uh, portion of City Hall and the mayor's office for execution of the deer hunt.
Second.
May I second it? Any further discussion?
Hasn't that already been done? Hasn't that done?
We understood that it was still a go, that it was put back on here for reconsideration. So we are waiting for the final shooter drop, I guess you could say. Still, we know exactly what's going to happen. So we don't get, have to go back and call these hunters and say, well, it's not going to happen again. So, Mr. Berry.
Uh, question for the city attorney. Is this motion necessary?
If you have a valid reconsideration, uh, it probably is. I don't know that you've reached the point of a valid reconsideration. You put it back on your agenda, but I don't know that you've followed through or the council's followed through with properly doing that. But it would clarify the matter if this is a valid reconsideration and the vote was taken on the motion as stated. I think it would do a long ways to clarify the matter.
Ms. Lundblad.
What would be a valid reconsideration?
I think you have to follow Robert's rules to see whether the proper person and proper entities are requesting a reconsideration of the vote that was taken three times ago and whether it's been done in a proper timeframe and in a proper, uh, manner.
Being a resident expert on Robert's rules, why is she?
I don't have an opinion.
Would you?
That's helpful.
Yes.
I, I guess I'm confused.
I answered.
Why, I mean, uh, what are we reconsidering? I mean, I think the question was from, uh, Mr. Parker was, this has already been done. So, uh, is that, I mean, I think what I'm doing, I'm about to get caught in another trap that I got caught in three weeks ago. And I'm don't, I didn't like that feeling then when I seconded a motion that somebody made, uh, and it was for obvious reasons to defeat the purpose, defeat the motion. Uh, and I'm real tempted to withdraw my second because I'm not sure, I don't want to go into another trap like that. And I think at that point, I am going to withdraw my second.
I'll second. I think, I think if you believe at this point that there has not been a proper, uh, setup or reconsideration, that you could request, uh, that a superseding, uh, motion, basically to clarify the table's position. Take a vote by the table to make the ruling that the mayor just asked me to make that I don't feel comfortable in making. And then ultimately, the table is the one that decides proper order of business under Robert's rules.
Should we-
Shouldn't reconsideration have been done two meetings ago? I believe that's probably correct, and it wasn't. But you did not get your opinion, uh, until last meeting, so I don't know how that plays into it. And therefore, your, uh, the governing body ultimately is the six people at this table of what meets your rules under Robert's rules.
Mr. Ponnell. Well, if we were talking fish instead of deer, I'd say it's time to fish or cut bait. But, uh, the, the motion was made to clarify exactly in the process, and this is after many calls, emails, discussions with citizenry, that council at this table has done their due diligence in trying to, I don't want to say entertain, but exercise concern from the citizenry and evaluated verbiage in the ballot issue regardless of length of time. We at least got it down to one period of time instead of two different periods of time. And the only, I don't see any other further legislative action to be taken by this table. That's why I made the motion to take it off the table and give it to the mayor's office for administration of the hunt as approved.
Ms. Lundblad.
I will take the position that reconsideration was attempted two weeks ago, and it was improperly worded and failed on your opinion.
That's what he told us last, last time.
So that the attempt at reconsideration, as the way it was worded, ended up being incorrect. But the attempt was made as evidenced by the votes cast by the people who made the motion and then voted against it.
Ms. Balance.
I'd like to say this about that. It's come to my attention that the procedure that was followed to get this issue on the ballot may have been flawed. The time lapse between when it was voted to put it on the ballot and that when it appeared on the ballot may not be in compliance with state statute. The ballot issue itself that was voted on and passed by the people contains language that is strictly impossible to deliver. The proposed hunt is most certainly not the hunt that the people voted on. And I have it on reasonably good authority that there are funds available right now and people willing to sign on the dotted line to bring this into litigation if it continues. And that's all I'll say about that. Thank you.
Ms. Lundblad.
Well, I agree with what Ms. Balance just said about, except I will say that the citizens of this town had no idea what they were voting on when they voted. The ballot is according to regulations promulgated and time set by Arkansas Game and Fish Commission within the area prescribed. And of course, that means prerogative, and that has been totally ignored. But I'd like to also quote from a, uh, the Arkansas Democrat Gazette. When Earl Hyatt was interviewed on June 10th, because no real parameters were set out in the ballot as to what the hunt was going to be. So people had no idea what the parameters were then. But it says right here that according to regulations promulgated and time set by Arkansas Game and Fish, this is what Mr. Hyatt said. Declaring the city a deer camp really cut a lot of red tape, and it gave the city complete control of who is, is hunting inside the city limits. Otherwise, the Arkansas Game and Fish Commission would control the hunt and choose the hunters, which is exactly what people voted for. There were two programs available. The city decided not to do the one that Game and Fish has where they do control the hunt and they work with the Arkansas Ball Hunters Association. So I think it's, um, you know, a total miscarriage of justice because the people who voted against this hunt, you know, were voting against it because, some of them, because they didn't know what it was. It's, it's not all an emotional issue. They, you know, they voted against something that was so vague. And now all of a sudden, all of this specific stuff is coming up. I have another quote from July 7th.
Point of order.
What's your point of order, sir?
This is not a discussion of, uh, reconsideration. We've been through all this time and time again. We've gotten the phone calls, the emails. If you want to reconsider it, reconsider it. But we don't need to go through the whole discussion, tear at the wounds again, pick at the scabs. Let's move on.
Point of order, we'll reconsider. In front.
Yes. Mr. Ponnell's motion was to remove it from the table and move it to administration to proceed with the deer hunt.
May I second one?
Uh, let's see, Mr. Berry withdrew his second, Ms. Balance added hers.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
Four, two, zero?
Four, zero, two.
Deer hunt is on then. Is that my understanding, four, we leave the table so we can make the progress?
Off the agenda.
Yeah, off the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Moves us on to number eight, Sewer Commission Ordinance. Will that fall under the same premise as the previous one? Okay, so, okay, we'll need a motion to strike it from the agenda.
We'll suspend the rules and delete Item 8, new business, from the agenda.
Second.
May I second? Yeah, on the real compass.
Ms. Balance?
Aye.
Mr. Ponnell?
Yes.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Raphael?
Yes.
Ms. Lundblad?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Six, zero.
Thank you. Moves us on to number nine, moving city council meetings to the courtroom. You should have a memo from Don Matt.
Move to discuss.
Second.
Yeah, just want to make sure you have the paperwork. May I second, okay. Now you should have a memo from Don Matt.
Uh, I don't have it.
Okay.
Anybody else need one?
Yes. This paperwork process is starting to remind me of the cool hand moving. What we have here is a failure to communicate.
Yes.
I didn't get this till this afternoon, but at least I got it.
Floor is open for discussion for those that have copies of it. We'll discuss it. Mr. Ponnell?
This, this was on the agenda some time ago. It was moved to the goals workshop. And there were several discussions with the limited number of people we had there. I don't know if the viability of, I'm asking this question through the chair to Mr. Parker, viability of using the transit versus moving upstairs where we'd have more control over the transit space than we would have the courtroom.
Well, after the meeting the other night, I can see that upstairs is not that wonderful. It's kind of, the sound, I could see where the sound would be bad and, um-
Acoustics are crap, but-
Unless we rearrange, then we'd have to unrearrange the tables. And I didn't realize we'd have to be moving the equipment up and down. The transit basement is available. I was working on that, and then I asked a couple of council members what they thought. And they said, no, we like it here. So I just told the guy that was involved in running the cable from East Fountain to, uh, the transit. I said, we don't have the will, forget it.
Should we?
I've been in this room for 10 years, and I'll tell you, we've got to get out of this room. This is not conducive to good discussion. It segregates the citizenry from the room. It places council people face to face. And I know of no other council setup anywhere that's set up this way. And unfortunately, in some instances, it sets up an adversarial relationship with people across the table. If we're fanned out facing the audience, that's who we address our comments to. And I, I just feel for, for two reasons. The adversarial setup that we presently have and the segregation of the citizenry-